We recorded to the clouds, we're live right now, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, let's open the meeting. New Preservation Committee, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the majesty of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first I'm gonna call a roll of the committee. I do have to report two resignations and one party that can't be here tonight, which is Mr. Reins. But we lost Mr. Woods and Mrs. Coward. So we have two resignations. And Tim couldn't be here, Mr. Reins couldn't be here tonight. Other commitments. So I'm gonna take a roll, we got Mr. Marvell.
Yes.
Yep. Mr. Pruitt.
Here.
Mr. Emerson.
Here.
Dijts. Dijts. I'm a little bit wrong, sorry. Dijts. Mr. Rosa.
Good evening.
And myself. So we have, we need a minimum of five is the quorum to vote, so we do have enough people so we can do our, the first order of business. I think we've hashed this around, it's review and discuss the application for eligibility 2022-3 presented by the Park and Recreation Commission. And we went over it quite a bit. And I do have one copy of the application. It's the only one I have, other people, some members have theirs with them. But we went through everything, basically, we're here, I'd like to vote on it and move it forward so we can go to town meeting. That's basically the first order of business tonight, so I do have to have somebody make a motion and second it.
Make a motion that we set the playground on North Dyke.
Do I have a second?
Can I request that you make a mark at each one of that with the location and at the back end of the ball field?
Let me rephrase that again, because I know we had another discussion too. I'd like to make the first motion that we approve the North Dyke playground, but a playground would be in back of the baseball field, not in front.
As far as the new plan.
That's all with the new plan that Kevin has submitted.
And we have a second? Oh, a discussion?
So what was being proposed is approval for playground equipment to be placed on inside an existing park in North Dyke, just in case there's any question or clarification, so that right now the proposal in front of us is to place it behind what is the baseball field and as described in the plan that the community has already seen. Is that, is that clear enough?
What did I mean?
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just like, it seems at the previous meeting, there seemed to be some Let's make a clarification. This communication between, was the project, when it was voted, about a month ago, two months ago, whatever it was, when it was voted down, was the project voted down or was it the location that was voted down? Because that is a major contention.
I think the big.
And so I'm going to ask you, Mr. President, what is?
Chairman.
Chairman.
From my understanding, and we've had quite a few discussions back and forth with it, I believe the role at the time was the, that's why Kevin, Mr. Smith brought in the plan, and it's really the placement was, seemed to be a problem. Not the, not, and actually the other, you know, and he even made, the second plan that came in is even better than the first plan. I think it's even gonna be more aesthetically fitted to the neighborhood.
So, so you're saying that the.
The main rub was.
Initial vote was to vote down the location, not to vote down the project.
Correct.
Okay, and I think that clarification then sets us up for a full vote tonight on whether we move forward with this project, rather than start from the beginning up and go from there.
I would agree that that's pretty much, I think, everybody's vision here.
Okay, I see all these heads nodding.
I believe that that was mentioned about the plan moving that out back, because I know when Mr. Smith presented it, there were a lot of, there was some issues about the location, and they asked him to put it in the back, and then Kevin came back with another plan to place the playground in the back. I don't have those minutes in front of me, but I know it was mentioned.
Well, I, my intention to vote at that time negatively was to vote on the location, not on the project itself.
That's right.
I always wanted the project. Yeah, same here.
So, excuse me, Mr. Chair, do you mind if I?
Go ahead.
I just want to add a note for the audience, that the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission in the form of Kevin Smith is with us this evening and is, and is clearly has an understanding of what we've just discussed. Is that right?
And I just, can I just add?
Sure.
And the reason why I came back with a new overall plan and a different design is because essentially, we created more space, so it's like we kinda wanted to fill, if we had to go back to the drawing board, I wanted to do a little more if possible. As far as the cost comparison between the old plan and the new plan, playground equipment model wise and installation wise and servicing wise, the costs are comparable, but we do actually, you know, and you see in the application, there is some additional cost with locating it out back, but the playground portions of it are, are similar.
Okay, can I ask a question? You submitted, I think, four different configurations here, right?
Well, two, two views of two different configurations. And then the actual, the application for, the total ask is for the second view, which includes the sand, like the sand play area as well.
So what if you include two different configurations instead of the one that you sort of, the one that was?
Because I, who knows? Who knows? I work eighty hours a week, I'm trying to do a lot of shit.
Is it possible?
Well, one thing, actually, if I, let me come up and point it out to you, just because it actually, it's not all that different in the aspect that, this, this kinda gives you a little bit bigger view of this portion, and then this is an additional section, so it's, well, this is the, is the same on both, and then we added the sand area. And the reason why we added the sand area is because the equipment cost was coming out a little bit less, and we have an abundance of sand already there, so we figured, well, we might as well utilize the sand and add a whole nother playground.
So this is your, this is the one you're submitting?
Correct.
Okay.
We're submitting that, oh, option one of options.
That would be, hold on, let me go back.
Because I have option one.
I think it is option two. Yes, option two. Which is, and I did break down two, of what we had for these kinds of contributions from the highway department doing excavation, and some contributions from Parks and Rec itself.
No, I think we need to specify the total option two. That's fine.
So the proposal is still waiting for a second, then?
No, you seconded it.
Okay.
Okay, can we have the proposal read back to us and include in which number, I hear number two, and the price of that proposal, so that we can take it to town meeting that way?
That's yours, Kevin.
Yeah, and then.
Okay, so do you call this?
And that would be.
Okay.
Just so you have the question.
All right, I'll try the best of my ability, I stink at this one here, try. So my first motion is want to clarify that we accept the playground at North Dyke, the new equipment, to be placed in the back of the baseball field, not in the front. That's gonna be option two, and the amount requested is two, $210,000, am I correct? Okay. The total cost of the project, should I mention that too? Would be $247,155.77.
And I still second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, clear?
I have a question. I think the warrant article will say something like, according to a proposal for funding, et cetera, et cetera, voted on the CPC, et cetera, et cetera, data. I think that's what the warrant article will say. I don't think the warrant article will talk about the location of the playground, so we have to make it very clear that this is a white word.
It's basically the, but that when they take it to town meeting, it's for money.
Well, and actually, and I don't have a problem, you know, in town meeting, if I'm the one to, you know, ask the moderator to put the town vote on the article, I have no problem clarifying that it will be.
Anyone that puts in a, an article can speak, anyone can speak on it.
I'm sure there'll be discussion, so.
Mr. Chairman, do we just say the amount requested, probably not the other amount, right? Because that's all I take them from the CPC.
Yeah, we just.
So we just mentioned the, yeah, the amount.
Okay.
And what, what was that, 200?
$210,000.
Okay.
And I should clarify to you that this is, we're accepting the application for eligibility and accelerating the process here. Next meeting, next week, I believe we're going to consider moving.
Well.
Unless there's an issue with the timing of the order.
Well, yeah, can I ask a question?
No.
See, I don't know the process, so in that, next, is there, I'm assuming there's an actual form, but I'm a major for funding, correct?
Here's what has to happen, might as well bring this up in discussion. The warrant closes on the 13th, so we're gonna, we wanna take a vote on this, and then I have to talk about, there's a thing that pushes all the other stuff forward that has to be voted on by the committee, and I have to bring that up, and that, after we do, I have to take a vote first, and then I have to work on, the budget has to be approved, and then that will accelerate it tonight, and it'll go, you know, I was gonna bring this up, another part that might as well bring it up now. I had a meeting with the town administrator, the town accountant, met in his office, and then I had to go and meet with the town clerk, so we could get all this stuff moved, you know, accelerate everything and get it done. So my plan was, you know, good, you know, to do it the right thing, I want to move it tonight, I want to move everything tonight, get it done tonight.
When you have the motion.
That's what we're gonna do. So if that helps clarify, I'd like to move the vote.
Agreed.
Okay. So that's, all those in favor? I, I wanna, I have to.
The roll call, maybe, just.
Yeah, we have to do a roll.
Yeah, let's do it officially.
Dave Marvell?
Yes.
Playground, Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Aye.
Mr. Dijts.
Mr. Rosa.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's unanimous.
Okay, very good, so that moves forward.
I'd just like to make a comment about the playground, I know you guys waited for a long time, and I have grandkids, and I know we started this a few years ago, and it's been a long, long haul. I mean, hanging on the CPC to see, to get this done, and to me, it's like a breath of fresh air, we got this done tonight, so thank you all for coming out, thank you for your support, I appreciate it.
We do appreciate you coming here and first.
So I have all the kids, and we need to take care of them, so thank you.
But you gotta pick up the litter.
Okay, so a big thank you to Parks and Rec folks, particularly their Chair Kevin Smith for his steadfastness in this project on behalf of the community.
Lot of work. We want to see it succeed and move forward, and that's, so that's where we're there. Okay, the next order of business is I want to talk about the, what the ad meeting today, as I mentioned. And this is a. Now, this is, just like something I want you to look at, that we met, I met today with them, with, as I mentioned. And. Okay, what this sheet does is, it's kinda like a, like a fast worksheet, and what you're gonna do is you can plug in, and we have a financial, we'll have a financial report after we get done with all the stuff that we have to take care of first. But then we have a guy, they, Mr. Emerson handles all the financials, also the vice chairman, so he keeps all the numbers up in, in order and everything, so we know what we have. Now, as I mentioned, I met with the town administrator and the town accountant at my first meeting, the second meeting I met with the town clerk, who's also working with us to get this thing moved as fast as we can to meet the deadline for the closing of the town warrant. So the other thing is, what you're doing here on this other sheet, which I only have one of, basically I'm taking last year's figures, right? And we're just, but I can pass this around, if you want to look at it to the board, please. And basically, you're taking last year's figures, and this part of it is what moves the other articles. So I didn't have the other, your article was, we haven't really written your warrant yet, per se, because we didn't know where, how to vote, but now we know, we can write it now. So this top part is what we're moving the other stuff forward with, and this is what we worked on today, so.
So their monies as far as now?
Oh, their monies.
Their monies will go into a separate fund that will be guaranteed but not spent?
Yeah, yes, their monies will go into, the monies are there, into the, you want to explain?
They, they put it on the, on the financial report, they call it incumbents.
Incumbent, okay.
So the accounts are incumbent by the amount that town meeting votes until that actually happens. Somehow we check it to written with the.
When do you expect this project to be completed? This summer?
It'll be probably because of the way, essentially, we need approval, town meeting.
Can I hold the conversation until after I get done with this part?
We'll clear that up.
I'm sorry, you were speaking, sir, so I didn't want to interrupt.
Right, so they'll, they'll put it on the fin, now, we do receive these balances and also these, and I want to have a conversation with the town accountant to make sure that, I have some issues with this, so are those issues really on the town's books, or are they just on this report? I hope they're just on the report. So, you know, we're gonna resolve that, and hopefully, I, I mean, I hope it'll be before town meeting, but certainly after town meeting, we can update it version. She says she can get updating it about once every three months. You know, at this time of year, it's hectic, so.
No, I'm, I can talk to her Monday, touch base with her again, because I, plus I have to talk to the town administrator about the vote and all that stuff.
Just a little clarification from me, so I know the audience can't see it, so I'm gonna try and highlight this a little, or speak to it for a moment to help explain. So they have, like, say, four categories here, and the, and the wording, I think, is interesting, it says estimated revenues for historic resources, estimated revenues for community housing reserve, estimated resources for open space, estimated, I'm sorry, rece, I mean revenues, estimated revenues for budget reserve. Now, maybe, I'm just trying to think of the right way to approach this thing, are we saying that CPC funds are gonna be divided into four sections?
It's always been.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying that, but it's, so they're not talking about revenues from historic resources, they're talking about the earmarking CPC funds for these categories.
We get every year 1% of the town's property tax revenues.
Right, but it goes into one bucket? Goes into certain one bucket, right?
Right. Sometime you'll, depending on the state, the state will match. So, so what this warrant article is, is really a routine, so a legal requirement that we set aside 10% for each of the categories you mentioned, and something for our.
It's a straight budget. Okay.
And then the rest of it is left in our undesignated, goes to our undesignated, you know.
All right.
So at all times, there's something for each of the categories.
And, and just for the audience, it says, because you made reference to a law, it says per section five of MGL, which is Mass General Law, chapter 59, chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988. So just, there is a reference to the particular law that applies to this, and I'm sorry, I didn't know that this was common practice in the past, so. I just wanted to make you aware that if there's any loss of flexibility to the application of CPC funds, there is, there is, it is a historical practice, and it has a foundation in law, so if anybody was curious about it.
We need to. I'm sorry. Good, thank you. So basically, the body, you know, to keep it, did you have anything else to?
Yeah.
Basically, you know, keep it simple, in fact, you know, to move it in the right direction without tying up a lot of time on it, because it's basically just something that drives the other stuff forward, but if I don't have the votes from the committee tonight on the, on that, you know, those categories, then I can't move the rest of the stuff to town meetings, so basically, that's what I'm, that's what we're, this, this, what we're talking about now, I just want to get this, that's why I met with everyone today, all people are involved, it's not just me, it's the town clerk, town administrator, town accountant, Dave works for the town accountant all the time, because we, there's a lot of stuff, we just want to keep it updated, so we know what we have. And it all has, it's the people's money, it all has to go to the town meeting, we just recommend, and then the people vote on it, that's, that's how it works. We don't, we, you know, basically, we recommend, we review it, and we're, we're just almost to that point, so if I can get this.
So, Mr. Chair, you're, you are recommending that we vote to approve the figures that you have in there?
This is our budget, basically.
All right, but the figures that you have in each one of these categories, is that right? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, which the town accountant has to plug in.
Oh, he plugs in the numbers?
Yeah, she, she.
She, I'm sorry.
But Dave has all the monies in here, but she, this, this is from the town clerk, so I came, I didn't have.
You just passed me a sheet that had numbers in these categories, right? Did I? Did it end up over there somewhere else?
I have it here. So basically, what we're doing is we're staying the same, if you, if you need to look it up, even the public, it's in the, it's in the.
All right.
The stuff listed from the last town meeting.
So are you looking for a motion that we approve?
I'm gonna.
All right, I'm sorry. That we, that we approve the, the allocation of CPC funds in these categories in these amounts, is that, we're on the edge of, okay? I'm moving on your shoulder. Should we read those off?
I can read them out loud, it's nothing.
This is last year's, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's okay.
All we're changing basically is the dates, I mean, the year, the fiscal year on it, it's the same numbers, and our, the administrative thing is 5,000.
So, Mr. Chair, the reason.
Anything we don't use goes back.
I'm sorry, am I?
No, go ahead, no, no.
So the, the reason I sort of discuss it a little bit is that, for instance, historic resources, they're talking about 12,500 or something akin to that, and then for community housing reserve, they're talking about 12,500, and again, for open space, 12,500, or budget reserve, which is sort of like a catchall, I think, is 82,500. Why do I mention that? Because there are folks in the community that may have some item in the historic resources that, that they would like done, so they know that there's money in there that could be possibly helpful, and likewise for the community housing and for open space, so they know there's, there's some, a amount of money that has been earmarked to help those causes, should folks that that's interested to, would like to come before the CPC committee and apply for some part of that funds for something they're working on. That's the only reason I.
Right, so basically, anyone that wants to apply to the CPC in the, in the town, that meets the parameters, is welcome to apply to the CPC, for all applications to apply. Basically, that's it, it's, it's people's money, to do stuff to help the people of the town, basically, that's where we're at, so if there's no other discussion, I'd like to move this one.
So I would make a, let me see, let me try, if I can put together the wording for a proposal, that we propose, that the proposal is that we approve a, sorry, this, a funding and its distribution by category as presented by the chair. Does that capture the thought?
And I can tell you what the categories are, it's.
All right. You're, just talk.
We're all set, yeah.
So.
Anything else?
So that's.
I'll second it.
I second it.
Okay, Maiden seconded, let's move it. Dave Marvell?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt? Dave Emerson?
Aye.
Aye, Dijts.
Mr. Rosa.
Aye.
And my son, so it's unanimous, so that moves.
Who was the first motion on that? That was.
Dave.
Rosa.
So that moves.
Who seconded that?
Me.
It was Mr. Dijts. So that moves that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we can get that to the, and understand the time, you know, we gotta move, because the warrant closes on the 13th, so I appreciate that.
Well, I guess I would pose my next question, the application for funding, how does all that work?
It's all, you're all set?
Well, no, so you just, you just approved eligibility, so then we still, the next step would be application for funding. What is the, wait, what, and how do I get the application for funding? How do I submit it?
That's a good one.
Because that's another, obviously, I think that's a piece that once the eligibility is approved, that the committee itself disperses, I don't think that document, or that any type of documentation pertaining to application of funding is available.
There is no, for public. So make, the cleanest way to do it would be to make a motion to cover that.
Yeah, I don't know if you want me to write on this paper, hey, guys, come to town, $210,000.
I was under the impression, no, I, I was under the, now, I don't have a former chairman here, we lost two members, but I did have those, the meeting with the town administrator, the town accountant, also met with the town clerk, and I was told, we went over all this, and this is what we need to do to move this ahead.
Right, well, actually, as I was saying, the reason why we're meeting repetitively was because we needed to get through this step, and the next step was I submit the application for funding, and then you guys would have to approve that and.
This wasn't for the funding, eligibility was done months ago.
Yeah, this is the funding.
No.
Well, no, we were denied.
No, no, that's what, that's why I brought up that question at the beginning, your exception was denied, not the application.
No, it's all set.
I, I would feel more comfortable if there was an actual vote approving the, the application for funding, not.
We just did it.
We voted for eligibility.
You know, you must remember how.
I'm reading, I'm reading the procedures on my phone. Ryan's former chairman sent out to us a couple of months ago, and so, basically, when we met last month, so it is, there's two steps, application for eligibility, which is what this said on, application for funding. So I weaved from last month, they were gonna have three meetings back to back, tonight eligibility, next week, funding, third week was to approve the warrant article, which is gonna be reserved by a placeholder, so that's, where, so are you telling us now that after you're meeting with the town clerk, that's not gonna fly?
Because if you look at the calendar, the warrant closes on the 13th, so when are you gonna meet?
So the placeholder idea, is that not?
That, as far as I know, it's, that flies with the town administrator.
So can that?
Mr. Chairman, can I? Yes. Specifically, when you had the last meeting, which I attended, what was happening was there was an expectation that this would be the application again that's submitted today to be voted on and approved, because you were planning to then meet on the 21st, which would be next week.
Or 14th.
14th, excuse me.
It closes on the 13th.
Right, right, but, but, finish. Specifically, there was going to be a placeholder, and that should be in the minutes, that you would, you would all agree that a placeholder would be put forth to the town administrator and to the superintendent, so that it could be, the warrant article could be written after the 13th. It would be a placeholder for it.
Correct.
Having said that, you don't, you, you don't, what you need to approve now is the funding, what you haven't approved yet is the actual expenditure of the funds, so that's what you still need to do. In order to do that, you can, if there's not a quote unquote form for CPC that has to be filled out with the expenditure of the funds, then you need a separate motion for the expenditure of the funds, after the expenditure of the funds, you need another motion to have it submitted as a warrant article. That's exactly how the process has to go.
Okay, just to add this.
Okay, so if we don't do it tonight.
If we don't do everything accordingly. If we don't do everything accordingly, or procedure, someone could raise a issue.
Great, so. So I'm gonna have to do it tonight to, uh?
You don't have to do, okay, so I'm gonna interrupt again, I'm sorry I'm doing this. You don't have to do it tonight theoretically, because as long as you have.
A placeholder.
As the chairperson, you are the one responsible specifically, who should have requested a placeholder through the town administrator to the board of selectmen, to the selectmen's office. If you did that, or do that, then you don't have to vote tonight. If you don't do that, or haven't done it, then you do have to vote on this tonight, so.
Alright, so who wants to?
You have two votes to do.
The town adminis, I can tell you this, the town administrator that I met, I met today, the town administrator, the town accountant, and he would not have me moving this forward if there wasn't a placeholder.
Right, and I get, and this is just merely a suggestion.
No, it's semantic.
This, for, you know, all intensive purposes, because of who has resigned, essentially, this is your warrant, not that I want to pressure you, but I think it would bring great relief to myself and to the members of the public, and save yourself meeting two more times this month. If it's, if there's a possibility of moving it forward, I mean, I think it would be greatly appreciated by all of us in attendance. If we could have the, you know, assurance that we're good to go. I, I hate to see this. I hate to see this project get caught up and leave anything to chance on some sort of technicality.
So, Mr. Chairman, there would be two votes. One vote would be to actually approve the dispensing of the funds of two hundred and ten thousand dollars, specifically for the purposes of the North Dyken Playground. The second motion separate from that would be to have a warrant article for almost the same language to approve two hundred and ten thousand dollars for the building of a, for the rebuilding of the North Dyken Playground.
I mean, to be safe, I think that would be.
And those are, and that's as simple as it has to be. Alright, so I can make a motion that.
Someone make a motion on that.
I can make, I'll make a motion that we, uh, expend, uh, the two hundred and ten thousand to support, uh, the, uh, purchase and, uh, and placement of the playground equipment at the North Dyken Park.
Second. Motion Maiden second.
Who made the second motion?
Mr. Digits.
Making this digits.
Well, you got it. Alright, I'm, I am looking through all the applications I've ever seen in this community. And for all to use. You know, I've never seen an application for funding.
I haven't either.
There's all the applications, I believe that what we need to do.
Well, let's, let's do it, and, and we get it.
For the future, we'll, we'll.
And, uh, to alleviate any problems.
But I think.
To alleviate any problems, I want to say so, which is to say, like, we could amend the motion to read that we move that we accept the existing application for eligibility as an application for funding in the amount which is.
I withdraw my motion, and I invite you to make a new motion. Go ahead.
So I move that we accept the, uh, the application for eligibility as an application for funding for the project, North Dyken Playground project, option two.
The amount.
And for, and the amount which is specified in the application.
And I second the motion.
So Maiden second, and let's do a roll call vote, and that should cover the, Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt? Mr. Erickson, Mr. Digits, Mr. Rosa, and myself as I, unanimous. Was that satisfied?
Well, no, I think you.
Oh, we got one, we got one.
One more, one more.
I'll cover it.
We need one more specific motion, because you need to now determine that this is going to be a warrant article. So you need one more motion with the language for the warrant article. So that's a little trickier, because the.
See, here was the, here's the rub on that, because.
Someone has to build that language.
Yes, because we didn't know how, we, first we had it pass, it had a pass.
Mm-hmm.
And this is what came out of that meeting we were discussing. This, like I said, this drives everything else.
Mm-hmm.
Now I have a blank space where I can fill your thing in.
Mm-hmm.
You get me?
I get it.
I'm trying to keep it as simple as possible. So, um, that's, that's a tough one.
Yeah, I don't know if you just keep it as.
I mean, I can share, I have an idea, if you just, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, does anyone have our copies in the old, uh?
I'm writing one up now, it's on me, and you'll see how I do.
Go ahead.
Do we finish writing?
Something like this.
Right. Oh, look, we have.
I got something. I mean, thank you. Stand by, folks, we're. We do have one participant on Zoom.
Uh, Kevin.
Oh. You sound like. Last, uh. Yeah, alright.
I think we're gonna brief recess forward.
We're kind of in a, uh, let's take a brief recess. Sound good?
Yeah.
We'll come back, so.
So I want to ask Kevin a question. We're approving the amount you've asked us to fund.
Mm-hmm.
There's more money there, so we have a separate warrant for that.
So no, there's not actually physical dollars there, there's in-kind contributions, like, so for excavation, you just get to.
So the town doesn't have to vote to spend that money?
Correct, and there's, um, contributions with, from the Parks and Recs budget for some smaller items that will contribute to the playground, and then the rest of the money is actually in-kind contributions for work performed by the highway department.
Okay.
Alright, we.
I, I, I think.
We're in a little recess.
Let me just read, I'm not going to make it as a motion, I'm just going to read it, and you're going to see if I'm missing, what's, what's going on. Motion to place an article on the town warrant of the CPC to fund a playground commission project for the North Dyken Field in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
North Dyken Playground. Or park, or look at it, at North Dyken Park, or Dyken Park.
North Dyken.
Can you mention two, on that plan two, do we have two? I'm just saying, option two.
Well, that, that was in the, the motion in the past.
So we're good with that, okay, just trying to cover a lot of bases.
Alright, alright. Well, okay, so let's come out of the recess.
Where's the one that you had, you said you had one in the past. Okay, alright, well, that's, I just got it reversed a little bit.
We have time, if you want to rewrite it, we can wait.
Yeah.
If we want to, if we want to, do it like we need to say, we're going to. Okay. This will be on this replication. I think we want to approve it from the undesigned fund. Interesting fact, there's not actually a category called recreation.
But that covers anything that's not.
It usually falls under open space.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I was going to say, I believe it's included in open space. So we could, in fact, uh, take some from open space, but we don't have to.
Okay, so this is going to be, um.
Alright, so.
We're historic, that's not historic, that's community housing, that's not community, open space?
No, it's going to be from the undesigned fund, because none of those categories have.
Okay.
So as part of the discussion, could we put forward this draft warrant to the chair and, uh, and ask that he resolve any, uh, or, uh, any wording with the town administrator? So as to construct a warrant.
No.
So, no, you want to do, okay, just a thought. We, we, you know, you're gonna.
We're just, no.
You're gonna get a draft that's.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to give you some leeway.
Yeah, I got you, we're just trying to, if I can move that first part, this other stuff all falls into place.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Stand by, folks.
We waited this one.
Yeah, we waited that long.
We're saving, you're coming to another meeting, so that's.
Patience is a part of the process, was, was there anything else on the agenda this evening?
Unfortunately, yeah, I was just gonna have a financial report.
Anything else, sir?
Contained, no.
Okay. Okay. So we would, oh, okay, motion.
Okay, motion to place article on the town warrant to see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred and ten thousand dollars from the undesigned account to construct a playground at the North Dyken Park under the direction of the Playground Commission. Think about it first before you, uh, I hope you can read it, because I would do it, uh, rather. Insert the words Community Preservation Commission. Just to make sure. Yeah, put it there.
The CPC.
Okay. I agree with that, no. An undesigned, community preservation account. Undesigned, community preservation account.
Am I reading? It's the motion.
Okay.
Want to call?
Then I will give it to you, so everybody will.
I'm gonna come out of the recess and, uh, I'm gonna ask for, Mr. Digits, I'll make a.
Okay, I'll make a motion to place an article on the town warrant. The article would read, to see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred and ten dollars from.
Two hundred and ten.
Two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Your ready is what's on. From its undesigned reserve account by the Community Preservation Committee to construct a playground at the North Dyken Park under the direction of the Playground Commission.
Of the Parks and Recreation. Is, is it, is it a playground, or is it installing equipment? In a, in an existing playground, is it?
Well, it, it's, in other words, there's no playground there, right? Without the equipment, is that?
It hasn't been there in fourteen years, okay.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, can I? Speaker, okay. Sure. There's probably a legal problem with the way this written right now, which is, this is a motion. It's not the language you would put in the article. The motion, the way it reads right now, is what you can vote on. The article, to be almost as precise as I can, would simply have to say, the CPC is recommending the approval for the expenditure of two hundred and ten thousand dollars from undesigned funds for the rebuilding and relocation. Go ahead. Of the North Dyken Playground, period, that's it.
That, more or less what we have?
No, no, it's not, no, that's, that's a little more, that's concise, it's very concise, it has to be used, and that's the way you have to do it.
Can someone take, take that, to make sure?
Let's take another run at that, sir.
Alright, it's, it's listening.
Do you want to do it again?
Yes, sir.
Here we go.
Take it out now.
Jonathan, Jonathan, can I just, one thing?
Yep.
Don't, I would not include the language reconstruction and re, I would just put the construction of the new.
Okay, okay. The CPC. Dave, you want to just?
Well, we're trying to work from.
Well, we're both gonna write this out, make sure it's correct, go ahead.
The CPC is recommending.
Oh, recommends.
Right. Recommends the expenditure and approval. Of two hundred and ten, ten thousand dollars from undesigned funds.
Hey, hold on for a second. Okay, thank you.
For the construction of.
Wait a second. We should have a keyboard. Okay.
And relocation of.
And relocation of.
A new, is that okay?
Yeah.
North Dyken Playground, period. That's it. So when you.
The selectmen will actually write the warrant, and what goes on the warrant.
Exactly, and that's the way they're going to want it. So what you suggested, sir, for what you wrote earlier, that's perfect for the motion, but this is what will be submitted as the article, so you can make a motion for the article to have it approved, to have this as a warrant article, but in your motion, you should also indicate how you would like the article to read. So let me, let. Let me take a run at this. Uh, though, uh, I would make a, a, a motion, uh, that, though, that, though, a warrant worded the following way, be submitted to the town administrator or to, uh.
To the board of selectmen.
To the board of selectmen, to be placed on the warrant, the following, the CPC recommends expenditure and approval of two hundred and ten thousand dollars from un, undesigned funds for the construction and relocation of, of a new North Dyken, uh, of, of a playground, of playground equipment.
I think you just.
Just, just, just new North Dyken Playground.
Relocation of a new North Dyken Playground.
Yeah.
Alright.
There was one word I think you were missing in there. Just, just start, just start reading it again, and I'll stop if it comes.
I think, please bear with me, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm doing it.
The CPC recommends for expenditure and, uh, and approval of two hundred and ten thousand dollars from undesigned, from the undesigned funds for the.
Undesigned account.
Undesigned account, sorry. This is good, this is good. Account for construction and, and relocation of a new North Dyken Playground.
Period. Okay, now, you put the, it's, CPC recommends approval of two hundred thousand dollars from its undesigned account.
We'll change.
Its undesigned account.
Okay. I'm gonna take a run at this one more time, and we'll see if it flies. And anybody can replace me, that's fine.
Okay, wow, here we go.
I think I got a question from the board.
Yeah, so for what? Relocation, to me, means there was somewhere else from where it's proposed. Yeah, I would say straight that, we all.
Construction is going, we've already.
Construction of, so we're gonna put a line through relocation, okay. Okay, so, um, the CPC recommends expenditure and approval of two hundred and ten thousand from its undesigned account for the construction of a new North Dyken Playground. Okay, so that's the proposal for the wording for the warrant. And so now all I need is a second, correct?
Or we. That is us telling the selectmen we worked on there.
So this is, so my proposal is, is that this be the wording that we go forward with to be on the board.
To the board.
To the board, to be on the board.
So do we have to vote on it, so it's, it's the wording we agreed to?
You need, you need a, you need a motion.
Yeah, we're gonna vote on it.
You need to make a motion. And then if they write the, um.
Read the warrant.
They write the article, or all we can recommend to them. And then if they write the, the article, they write the article, or all we can recommend to them, what?
Yeah, it's the article.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
Let's just.
I think there was another, two more, yes, sir.
What I said was, what you need to do is very simply, make the motion.
To that one?
You need to make a, you know, we'd like to make a motion to have it placed on the, the following placed as a warrant article. Period. So you're meaning exactly what, Dave, what you just read, and then you're gonna get a second, and then you're gonna vote.
Exactly.
We're making a base of the following.
It's making official, making a motion.
So I'll make, I make a motion that we place on the warrant.
No, no, let's not have the warrant, you're, you're.
Sending to the board of selectmen.
Sending it to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, so I'm making a motion that we.
Send the language.
Send the following language to the board of selectmen.
Read.
For.
For approvals of the warrant.
For approval as a warrant article, period, period.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, let's call for a vote. Dave, Mark, the.
Aye.
Mr. Rickerson.
Aye.
Mr. Digits, Mr. Rosa, and myself as aye, unanimous.
Could you read the, the question into the record for the actual article? Because the motion was made in second as you four, after the following was not read. He said that the following replaced, that there was no following.
Oh, I'm sorry, so I should read what we did.
Read it again.
Correct.
All right.
Sorry, gentlemen.
So, I'm sorry, so. That, that proposal, that, that motion would include, encompasses the following words for the warrant, the CPC recommends expenditure and approval of $210,000 from its undesigned account for the construction of a new North Dyson Playground.
Second.
No, I don't know, do we need to vote?
Well, we might as well.
Do we put it right, vote it all together?
All right.
Yeah, all right, so, Chairman, you wanna take a?
Take another roll call.
Aye.
Mr. Marvell.
Aye.
Mr. Rickerson.
Aye.
Mr. Digits. Yeah, Mr. Rosa, and myself, as aye, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, it's been a, it's been a sub day.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all of it.
Oh, okay.
Right. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you all for showing up tonight. But I get their attention, folks.
Please stick our seats and stand down.
Mr. Haller, do you wanna get in front of the camera so they can see you? It doesn't. Stand right over there, hold on, I'll get you. Selectmen Hall, one second, wanted to say a few words about Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
And we're gonna turn the floor to Mr. Hall.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Hall.
When you serve in government, it's not always easy. Especially when you serve voluntarily with no pay. Mr. Rosa has served the town well. On behalf of the Town of Dyson, this will be his last meeting as a member of the CPC, and also Park and Recreation Department. And I want to thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so the last item is the financial report. If you're ready. It's the same as last.
I'm getting from last month, driving together, hoping to attend one of our upcoming meetings, but it looks like we cannot.
We'll have to wait till.
Pass on those meetings. I don't think there's.
Yeah, I think those other two extra meetings, it might even been, somebody miscalculated the calendar, because when we left today with the town administrator, the town clerk, and town accountant, we looked at the calendar, especially the town administrator mentioned, because the warrant closes on the 13th, that we had to do, we had to expedite everything tonight, so this was the, believe it or not, this was a plan that was, went into motion, not too many rough spots, and I thank everybody, we got through it. And, you know, finally, we can get, get going on this thing for this gentleman, and his committee, commission, and the town, and the children. So, it's been a long one, I'll tell you. So that's where we're at, so basically, Dave, that hasn't changed since last.
It hasn't changed since last.
All right, so.
We want to mention this one thing, let's say the selectmen, I'm not sure if I have a warrant, which I'm sure they were, just to get. The language, do we need to go over that again?
I do not believe that we do, no, because according to what I was told in that meeting, as long as we get this, this first part voted on, it moves the other stuff forward. So you don't have to, there's no more voting, we're done voting, and I do appreciate your, everybody's, this man has a lot of due diligence with the figures, he's been working hard with the town accountant, and he knows the numbers, that's why we have a fiscal, financial guy, he's also the vice chairman, Mr. Erickson. So he does a good job with that, and we do try to keep up to it, up to date on it. And because of the amount of monies that are, there's, you know, there's a substantial amount of money in these funds, so we have to make sure that we, you know, take good care of everything, and that's why we work with the town administrator, the town accountant, and the town clerk, and if you look at the regulations, there is even, the town clerk has his own spot, you have to be responsible with the, it's the people's monies, it's all accounted for, so we know it's safe, and it's open to anyone that wants to apply in those parameters, so. I know it was a little bit of a rough road getting here, but we, now we crossed the finish line to that part of it.
Well, wise man once said to me, we know a lot more today than we did.
Absolutely.
Four months ago.
I'll say that much. Very true. And if there's nothing else, basically, I don't have any other business.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Uh, do we need public?
Oh, there's news out there.
Uh, well, he calls himself a Titan, so.
Oh, Mr. Dyson? Did you have anything?
Mr. Dyson, you have anything to say, because we're doing public input right now?
Oh, he's muted.
It's Mr. Dyson?
Well, he's not in meeting, so.
Okay, does anybody else have any public input in the audience? I mean, in the gathering of supporters, folks that came on, I appreciate that too, but we appreciate it. We don't get that money. Because it's nice to see. It was good, thank God, it went, I thought it went. So let's go back to that, Mr. Digits.
I move that we.
I make a motion that we.
I second it, all of us.
Well, let's do a roll call, Mr. Mark, well.
Aye.
Mr. Pruitt, Mr. Rickerson, Mr. Digits, Mr. Rosa, and myself, it's unanimous, let's call it a night. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you very much for your minute. You got your hands.
Oh, I'm ready.
I do, but.
Play a good part, look, you know yourself.